As as usual, we love to begin with the pledge of allegiance and I just happen to have my flag here. So let's begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Awesome. Thank you for that. And so just to make it official, let's see who's here. Commissioner Zuber, what you call the role?
Sure, Commissioner Charia.
Yes, here at Wayne County Canton, Michigan.
And Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes, I'm here, Wayne County Canton Township.
Commissioner Engel.
Craig Engel, Lee County, Florida, Benita Springs.
Dallas, okay. Commissioner Foster.
Good evening from Wayne County Canton, Michigan.
Commissioner Okon.
Good afternoon or good evening here from Wayne County Canton, Michigan.
Great, Commissioner Singh. Your mic's off.
Oh, my, yep, unmuted.
Yeah, here, Canton Wayne County, Michigan.
Thank you. And Commissioner Weber.
Present Canton Wayne County, Michigan.
Okay, Commissioner Zuber here from Canton Township, Michigan. And Chairman Green.
On board Wayne County Canton Township, Michigan. Welcome, everybody, and I don't know how many people that are also with us, but Patrick, you you have a handle on that. But welcome to everybody who's who's on this call. So tonight. Well, before we get to that, let's talk about our minutes from the February first meeting. We did meet by Zoom then. Do I hear a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved. Second.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioner Zuber and support by who supported that? Commissioner Weber, okay, all right. Because we can't do all in favor, Commissioner Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Add to yes. All right, so those minutes have been approved. We have an agenda tonight scheduled of five, five items. Anything late to add from staff, Patrick?
Thank you, there's only one modification to the agenda and it's on the second page under number seven. The new business set public hearing. That public hearing has actually been set for next Monday night, March 8th, that's the special meeting. There was a little discrepancy in the in the hearing notice, so we had to renotice that one. So rather than setting the public hearing for April, that's to hold the previously noticed hearing for March 8th of 2021. We made that modification to the agenda online, so I just want to note that.
Okay, so it is for March 8th.
Correct.
It is, that is correct, okay, because that's what I have in front of me anyway, so we will get to that. Okay, doke, anything from the commission to add? Any subject matters or anything we need to talk about? All right, so let's approve tonight's agenda. Commissioners, would you call the vote to approve tonight's agenda?
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Commissioners Zuber and support by Commissioner Charia to approve tonight's agenda. Commissioners Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
I think that was, I think that was Commissioner Weber, because we seconded, no?
No, no.
I wasn't looking, sorry. Okay, yes, I will call the role, it's Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Add to yes. Okay, so our first agenda item of the night is Canton crossings. Where we're considering a special land use for property which is located north of Michigan Avenue, east of Canton Center. Patrick, could you give us more detail on that?
Sure, yeah. I will bring up the screen sharing here so that we can see the map of the subject area. Okay, I think that's up here. The project sponsor proposes to construct an automobile wash establishment, otherwise known as a car wash in the zoning ordinance, on the east side of the vacant portion of the subject parcel. This parcel is located between Canton Center Road and Old Canton Center Road, just north of Michigan Avenue, and it's north of the 711 and Comerica Bank Building. The site is zoned C3 regional commercial and car wash establishments are special land uses in the C3 zoning district. Although the special land use plan shows multiple commercial buildings on the site, this special land use application is for the car wash use only. Therefore, the other buildings shown on the plan are illustrative and the proposed site development will be considered on a future site plan review application, which will come to the planning commission if the special land use is approved. The project sponsor is in the process of preparing an application for site plan review. And this special land use plan includes far more detail than are typically required on a special land use plan. Currently, we're working with the applicant on site plan revisions. So the planning commission will review the site plan at a future meeting if the special land use is approved. I will zoom into the part of the site where we're looking at the car wash building and I'm going to turn it so that north is up. So to the to the east is Old Canton Center Road and to the west is, it's labeled New Canton Center Road, but it's what we typically call Canton Center Road. And across the road on the west side is is the Kroger building. And the car wash is located on the page here, close to Old Canton Center Road. There is an existing east-west drive coming off of Old Canton Center Road that will primarily service the car wash development. There's also a curb cut farther north on Old Canton Center Road that's proposed to service the car wash. And in addition, on the west side, there's a proposed curb cut that's aligned across the road from from Kroger. So there are two new curb cuts proposed. One on Canton Center Road, one on Old Canton Center Road. And there is existing points of access from both Old Canton Center Road and Canton Center Road, east and west, as well as through to Michigan Avenue with a north-south drive that goes to the 711 and the Comerica Bank Building. The proposed use of a car wash establishment is a special land use in the C3 district. The proposed use is compatible with commercial uses to the south as a 711 and a bank. East is a multi-tenant commercial center and the west is a Kroger. So it's compatible with the adjacent development. The nearest residential development is Kimberly Meadow subdivision, which is about 500 feet to the north. So it's quite a ways from any residential development. The plans submitted illustrate that the proposed development is designed to comply with the dimensional requirements for a car wash establishment. It has the minimum site size of 15,000 square feet and the max building height. The proposed building and vacuum structures are located within the required 85-foot front yard setback from the right of way of Old Canton Center Road on this east side. And at the meeting of the zoning board of appeals on December 21st, 2020, the ZBA granted an 18-foot front yard setback variance to allow the building to have a 67-foot front yard setback from the right of way of Old Canton Center Road to the east. The ZBA also granted a 40 and one-half foot front yard setback variance to allow the vacuums to have a 44 and a half foot front yard setback from the right of way of Old Canton Center Road to the east. And some of the practical difficulties noted were that Old Canton Center Road is a secondary frontage. It's not as heavily traveled as Canton Center Road. So the triangular configuration of the parcel puts front yards on the west and east sides, which are very long. So to do the vacuum structures and do the car wash, there was a practical difficulty found in terms of both the setback and the location of those vacuum structures on the east side. In addition, the zoning board of appeals granted a variance to allow the vacuum facilities to be located in a front yard. The zoning ordinance doesn't allow vacuum facilities to be in a front yard, but because of the orientation of the lot, the front yards and the way that the traffic would flow, the zoning board of appeals approved the vacuum structures on the east side of the building, which is in the front yard facing Old Canton Center Road. But again, because that was seen as a secondary type of frontage, the ZBA had had approved it and considered the impact on the surrounding area, which there are no residences that would be affected. For the for the parking, the parking calculations are proposed to comply with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, which will be addressed at the time of site plan review. The ordinance requires 25 stacking spaces per wash lane. And if anyone was near a car wash the last few days and we had the nice weather, everyone is getting their cars washed, some of them can get backed up, which is the reason we have that 25-foot for that 25-vehicle stacking requirement for a lane. So the site most likely complies, but that would have to be illustrated on a site plan when it comes in. For the loading area, the ordinance requires loading areas to be in a side or rear yard. There is a northernmost loading area, which is partially located within a front yard. Now, this is not a loading area that services the car wash establishment, but it is something that if it is going to be retained on a future site plan application, then there may have to be a variance application for this loading area. As well, this dumpster here, the northernmost dumpster, is technically in a front yard area and dumpsters are not allowed in a front yard. So if if this loading area and this dumpster area are proposed to remain on a future site plan, the zoning board of appeals would have to consider a variance application. And that would principally service this building that's called future building site, which is proposed to be by others, so it's not part of the car wash building or the site plan that would impact the car wash building. Next, for the architecture, the car wash building is proposed to have 50% masonry. The applicant proposes a half-high concrete masonry unit as the predominant building material, which can have the appearance of brick. And at the time of site plan review, we can consider the structure in more detail. For the landscaping, there's not a landscape plan required at special land use review, although there is one included with the plan. And that will verify for compliance at the site planner view, but it is designed to comply with the ordinance. One item that we have regarding the sidewalks is that there is a there's a current sidewalk along Old Canton Center Road that terminates south of the proposed development. And right now, on the special land use plans, there are no sidewalks proposed along Old Canton Center Road to connect to the point where Old Canton Center meets Canton Center. And we recommend that this sidewalk be installed along the entire frontage of Old Canton Center Road. Regarding the lights and signage, those are areas that will be addressed at the time of site plan review. So on page four of our review letter, we go through several findings of section 27.03C of the zoning ordinance to determine whether the proposed use meets the criteria established by zoning ordinance. And without going through each one of the bullet points there on page four and going into page five, we find that the proposed development does meet the standards of the zoning ordinance for special land use approval, subject to the conditions noted in our letter. Therefore, our recommendation is for approval of the special land use for a car wash on the subject parcel as illustrated on the special land use plan for the reasons stated in our analysis, subject to the items noted in our review letter being addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, including any required variances. The last thing I do want to mention is that there are two drive-through facilities. They are proposed restaurants with drive-through windows that are illustrated on the plans. The special land use meeting tonight is is not regarding those restaurants or the drive-through. So if there is a future proposal by a drive-through tenant or a drive-through use, that will be a separate special land use that will have another public hearing that will be advertised for the drive-through use at that time, should it be proposed in an application. So that concludes my comments and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. This is a public hearing, correct?
That's correct.
All right, so let us open the public hearing.
Okay, I'm.
Okay, do I hear a motion open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right, who who moved that? I can't see that. I can't see it because of the.
That was Craig Engel, Greg.
All right, we've got a motion open the public hearing by Commissioner Engel and support by Commissioner Zuber. Commissioners Zuber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Certainly, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber. You might be muted.
Sorry, yes.
Commissioners Zuber, yes, and Chairman Green.
Add to yes. Okay, Patrick is the project sponsor here represented at all?
Yes, there is a project sponsor here. I just have to go through and start my screen sharing so I can see everybody, okay. There is a project sponsor here and I will I will promote the project sponsor to a panelist. Project sponsor is Dan Leclerc and he has his hand up. So Dan, I will promote you to a panelist. And if there are any other members of the project in attendance that would like to be promoted, please raise your hand and I can promote you to a panelist. So Dan, you're a panelist, if you could, please turn on your audio and your video if available.
Thank you, Patrick.
Hi, Mr. McLaren.
Hi, how you doing tonight?
Welcome.
Thank you very much. With me tonight is probably because I can't see him, but I'm assuming Jamie Burke is with us. Jamie is the applicant for the car wash. And Scott Griffith might be with us as well. He is the owner of the property and the developer of the property. Patrick did a really good job explaining what we're looking for. And just to reinforce what Patrick stated, we are currently submitting plans to Patrick's office for review to come before you folks for site plan approval for this project. And we will also be coming back for special land use for the drive-throughs. And we still have to work out, the zoning board of appeals will probably come, go back to ZBA one time for the dumpster enclosure as well as the additional loading and loading area. But those are not part of our request tonight. So tonight, we're strictly zoomed in on the car wash. Jamie Burke is a, he currently has another car wash in town. He has a quick pass car wash up on Canton Center between Ford Road and Warren Road. So he's a member of the community, very, very excited to open up a second location in Canton Township. Other than that, with respect to special land use, I really don't have any other questions. So I'm here pretty much just to answer any questions that you folks may have.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I am going to rely on you and for Patrick, a couple of questions that I have. But before that, I want to hear what my fellow commissioners have in mind if they have any questions. I'm going to just start with Commissioner Egenberger. I'm you, yep.
I do not. You did yourself in the middle of it, sorry. I do not have any questions, it looks pretty straightforward to me, so thank you.
Okay, and Commissioner Weber.
I also don't have any questions or comments, I think it's a great use for that that piece of property down there. I'm a frequent customer of their existing car wash up on Canton Center Road. So I'm well in favor of the use.
All right, Commissioner Engel.
I'm all set at this time, Greg, thanks.
Commissioner Charia.
Hi, it looks like a great project. I just had one question for the project sponsor, Dan. Why are you considering a phased approach towards the special land use? Why not all at once? Why in stages?
The, our original approach, we had one user that we were looking at that's, he was going to be bringing in his own special land use, one of the restaurants. That's not moving quite as quickly as the car wash. So we had, we had made the decision to just go ahead with the car wash at this point. We will be submitting for special land use for the probably both other drive-throughs at the same time here. We'll probably be submitting in the next week. So it is, it is coming. And just to kind of give you a little bit more insight, this piece of property was very, very difficult to plan because of the shape. It's got a lot of front yard in it, a lot of frontage. So it was very, very difficult. We have a proposed retail building kind of in the middle along the Canton Center frontage. That building is not your typical retail building, it's very, very small. But we were, we did everything we could to try to get a little bit of retail in here to support and complement the other uses that we have proposed. So Scott Griffith is very excited about this project. He thinks it's a great enhancement for this piece of property as well as the community. So so we will, we will be coming back at you with special land use again.
Oh, got it, thank you.
See, Commissioner Singh.
No, I'm all good, a good project, thank you very much, no questions.
Commissioner Foster.
I don't have any questions either, it looks like a great project. Yeah, I'm all set.
Commissioner Okon.
Yeah, this this, we're just looking at just the special land use, right?
Just for the car wash, yeah.
Yeah, I have no problem with the the land use. I hope we figure out a better way of laying it out, but I guess that will be in the next couple meetings. Thank you.
Laying it out how? Are you talking about traffic flow or?
Yeah, just, you know, the entrances and the direction of traffic and getting in and out of the site. So, yeah, I think we have a lot of work to go and do on that one.
Okay, well, I, because I have some concerns on that too. And I think those are things that that need to be addressed, even though site plan is not what we're after. They, we can help them going forward with that. But before, before we get into that, Commissioners Zuber, did you have anything that you wanted to say?
I second what everyone else has said, or several of the, my fellow commissioners have said about it being a good use for that very strange piece of property, so I'm excited to see that coming.
Patrick, historically, we, as as a commission, and I think it went through the board at that time, this entire wedge-shaped parcel had a project that was approved many, many, many years ago. Is this the same company, the same people involved with this? Because it was a very nice project that was approved and I think it was just before the economic crash kind of put the kibosh to a lot of things.
Yeah, there there was a project and I don't know how far through the approval phase it got in terms of both both township and county. But back when that project was approved, I think it was pre-crash, there had been a, there had been a variance granted on that east side for a dumpster enclosure to the east. And obviously, that variance has expired. And I only mention that as we had investigated the prior approvals of that when we were looking at the variance case for the car wash and that front yard in terms of how that east side has historically been treated. And so when we were looking at that, we did find the old variance file and and brought up some of the findings that the ZBA made in terms of that being a little bit more of a difficult side of the property to do a development on. But but you're correct, there was a unified cohesive development proposed on the site that was just never built.
Okay, but it did not include a car wash, I do remember that. My question, first of all, would be in the proportion of uses, space usage of, you know, the buildings and the parking lot and everything as opposed to open space. It does not look like this design can comply with a 25% open space. I mean, I'm just guessing, just looking graphically. You've got the retention pond, which has been there all the time, but that looks like a smaller version of the retention pond that's there, I don't know.
Yeah, they would have to figure out their retention area with with the county. And they would also have to look at how much of their site is dedicated to the different landscaping areas. So if there was a requirement to meet a certain, a certain percentage for open space, they would have to, they would have to increase it or do something else. Off the top of my head, I know that there's a 25% open space requirement for for plan developments and I think also in the central business district. For just a C3 district, we would have to look at those standards to see if there's a specific open space requirement for that district. But that would definitely be something that they would have to address at the time of site plan review. If there is an opening space requirement, we would have to go through that and do those calculations. And if they have to lose some parking spaces, for example, that that may be something that would be required. Although much of the township and many areas are overparked as it is. So losing parking spaces, I don't think would necessarily be a bad thing.
Okay, all right, it looks as if they had to go to underground detention in lieu of the loss of a lot of that detention area that's already there. According to the drawings, it looks like, looks like there's a combination of above-ground and below-ground detention.
That is correct, Mr. Chairman, we are proposing to convert some of the detention to underground.
Okay, all right, my my other questions has have to do a little bit with traffic flow, going back to Commissioner Okon. Because I'm looking at how you would come into the car wash itself and it appears that you want them primarily to come in from the south, that drive right behind the bank to go go that way. Although we know people are going to take the the shortest distance that they're affected by, which could include that that drive that's on the the northern side, the other part of the the site. Was that that flow calculated in terms of, you know, coming in from both directions? Coming in from the drive to the to the south and the drive to the north?
We haven't done specific calculations on it at this point. But we did, we looked at this from all aspects. People coming in off of Michigan Avenue would most likely come into the car wash area from Old Canton Center from the south. Anybody coming in off of Canton Center, depending on which way they're coming, they would come in most likely at Old Canton Center. And we think that there's also a high probability of people coming in and multi-using, going to the bank and get a car wash, going to 711, get a car wash. So there's, because of the different uses, we think that there's, you know, we're anticipating a lot of that.
Okay, so you're looking at.
Our main driveway is coming in right off, right across the road from the Kroger driveway. So we lined that up and really, we're only proposing one additional driveway that that's up on the north side, on the Old Canton Center side. Everything else is existing.
Yeah, we know that 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 driveway across from the Kroger driveway works because it's been there all this time. However, we haven't had a load coming from that driveway. Is that something that Wayne County, Patrick, would get involved in in terms of having that driveway right across from another one?
Yeah, both Old Canton Center Road and Canton Center Road are under the jurisdiction of Wayne County. So any curb cuts along those roads would have to go through the county permitting department.
Yeah, I can personally say I have, I have used that driveway many times, cutting through to go to either McDonald's or Kroger or Home Depot. You know, coming from Michigan Avenue, cut through there a lot of times, it's easier than going going up to the light. Anyway, so I noticed these like drawn at an angle notches on the east side of the car wash. at an angle notches on the east side of the car wash. Are, are those parking spaces? Or what, what are those? What's the?
Those are vacuum spaces.
Okay.
Vacuum spaces.
Gotcha, gotcha.
I can explain a little bit more to the car wash effect since I've been in the business a while. We have a high-volume car wash and, um, the ones we're building are pretty high-volume. So what you want to do with the traffic is we have three stacking lanes there. That way we can get plenty of people stacked in there comfortably. You want it all one way. You want to go in one way. There's only one entrance to this car wash. It's in, off of, uh, that south entrance. You go in one way, you go through the tunnel. When you come out, you have your vacuums on angles. So you can vacuum your cars. They're free vacuums. And then after that, you can leave out through North Canton, uh, Old Canton Center Road, or you can drive through the lot and come back out on the New Canton Center Road. Um, and the key behind that is you always want traffic going one way because the location I have now, it was proposed to us, we had a design in a certain way. And we followed it. And it's, and it's not good design when it's busy. And when it's busy, you're trying to vacuum, you're trying to towel dry, i- it, it gets real hectic. And, um, so that was, you know, not really my first choice at that design, uh, my, my first existing site. But moving forward, the key, all the ones, all the high-volume car washes I'd visit around the country, all the architects and engineers I, I talked to, it's all traffic's one way. You keep them flowing and you keep them moving, you keep them out. And as far as stacking goes, we run 167 cars an hour through this tunnel. Physically can get through this tunnel. So there is no anticipation on my end of any backing up. That's not my name. My name's Quick Pass Car Wash. So we try to, we get you in and we get you out, right? The old days of those road backups, you know, that goes back to technology and the way they load and, uh, the things we do are totally different. Now I learned from my first one. I just reloaded all new equipment in it for that reason there. So I can get more traffic through faster, more efficient. So there is no backups. And this season's been a pretty good season. And it's night and day from, we're doing more cars this season than last season, and I have no lines. So, uh, it's all working out. But that's, that's the idea here is you can vacuum, take your time. You're out everybody's way. Um, if you want to do your door jams with a towel or whatever, you can. But, um, the key, if you go to my, my existing site, which I'm more welcome to show you, and, um, you'll see the traffic jam up when you're putting everything. And there's two ways to get in that one also. And I remember at the planning commission, we kind of wanted to, to go one way. And they said they wanted us to go a different way. So you can see the backups. This is a very good design here.
Yeah, no, I, and, and I admire the use of the site in the sense that this very heavy-used part of the site is kind of, even though it's right there, it's secluded from the other businesses and their usage. So it kind of functions all, it's all on its own. However, the connections are there that in case somebody wants to do a car wash and then you want to go to a retail store or whatever, they still have the, uh, the ability to do that without going back out on Michigan Avenue and, you know, those kinds of things. So I find the flow of the site very, very interesting. And, uh, I just, I hope that the design, the building's design, this is a very kind of like central location coming, coming into, uh, the heart of Canton, let's say. Um, I'm hoping that your building designs, you know, meet the, the Canton standards. You know, we, we. We like good design, right?
I'm with you.
That's pretty much all I have. Uh, Patrick, we're, we're not touching anything else but just the special land use aspect of the car wash, right?
Uh, that's correct. When someone applies for a special land use, they have to submit what's called the preliminary plan. And there aren't too many details required on a preliminary plan. There are far more details on this plan that are required on a preliminary plan. So they've given us something closer to a site plan detail.
And I do appreciate that. I really, really do. Oh, one other thing I want to add is I am in favor of the sidewalk. All the, all where it is required along the two major, major fronts all the way around. You don't have, not on the drive there, going through in the, on the south side, but on the east and the west. So just, just, um, to me, I, I think it's necessary. If we can give everybody, anybody, because people are walking these days and I don't want to give anybody an excuse to get out on to those roads, um, today with the traffic going as fast as, as it goes there sometimes. Anyone else have anything else they want to say or add? Or do we have a, a motion?
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I just want to add real quick, talking about the traffic flow here. And I, as I mentioned earlier, I, I do frequent their other facility up on Canton Center Road. And I agree with, with, uh, with Mr. Burke that it's kind of crazy getting across the parking lot to go to the drying area, over to the vacuums, all that sort of thing. I understand that. I'm sure you wanted that, correct that. But I will say this. They have very little problem with moving the cars through. You, you see very little backup, even, even as busy as it was this weekend, there, the backup, the way they move the cars through and the way they, the way they line them up to get through their facility as quickly as possible. I, I think, I don't think that'll be, ever be a concern at this, at this facility.
Yeah, okay. All right, anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend approval of the special land use for an automobile wash establishment, AKA car wash.
Don't we have to close the public hearing?
Oh, we do. You're right.
Absolutely.
Did you just make a motion? Commissioner Weber.
Is there anybody in the audience that we need to get comments from?
Right now. Good question.
I'm, uh, looking into the audience. I do not see anybody with their hand raised. Um, if anyone wants to speak during the public hearing, please raise your hand. Or I think if you're on a phone, I think star six, um, might be, uh, what to push to talk. But I'm, I'm looking through the list of everybody in the audience and I do not see anybody with their hand raised or otherwise indicating that they want to talk.
In that, in that case, then I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Support.
All right. And I want to thank you, Commissioner Weber, for, uh, for bringing that up. Sometimes I get ahead of myself and things here. Commissioner Weber has, uh, made a motion and Commissioners Uber has supported that motion. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on that, please?
Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Oka.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes. And Chairman Green.
That's a yes. Okay, good luck with that. And, uh, their next up.
Wait, wait, wait. Chairman Green, we have to make the motion to approve or deny them.
We have to prove the site, or the special land use.
So can I make a motion?
Yeah, yes, go ahead.
I move to recommend approval of the special land use for an automobile wash establishment use on parcel number seventy-one dash one-two-nine dash nine-nine dash zero-zero-zero, zero-zero-zero-two dash seven-one-zero as illustrated on the special land use plan as the request meets the special land use criteria of the Canton Township zoning ordinance pursuant to the information and plans provided. Subject to specific design criteria to be addressed and corrected at the time of site plan review, including any required variances.
Sack.
All right, we've got a motion by Commissioners Uber and a support by Commissioner Weber. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote on this, please?
Sure. Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Oka.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes. And Chairman Green.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
All right. Um, yes, and good luck going forward, uh, to you, Mr. Burke.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Forward to the, uh, site plan, um, on this, when we actually get into, to, to the details and stuff. Uh, Patrick, what do they do next? They had, do the same thing with the, uh, trustees?
Uh, that's correct. The, um, township board of trustees, um, will take the, uh, planning commission's recommendation and, and the plans and consider, uh, final action on the special land use request.
Okay, all right. Good luck, gentlemen. Okay.
Thank you.
Our next agenda item is election of officers. Pull up the agenda here. Now, we only have three officers, right, Patrick?
Um, yes, there's a, uh, a chair, a vice chair and a secretary.
And a secretary, okay. All right, so I don't know how you guys want to do this. Is there anyone that wants to take a, a, or a role here? Or we have to have an election? Or, or just what do you want to do? I don't mind. If you guys don't mind me saying, having, I don't mind being chair. Uh, I don't know how Craig feels about being vice chair. Uh, and I don't, don't know how Don feels about, uh, being, uh, you know, the secretary of this.
I'm fine with it, Greg.
I am as well, unless somebody wants to, unless somebody rather do it. Don't all talk at once.
All right, so let's, let me put it to this way. Anyone else besides us three would like to step up and do one of the roles?
Crickets.
Yeah, so.
I think we are good with your current setup.
You, you guys, you guys all do a great job.
Do you need a?
Thank you. Appreciate it. Yeah, we, we'd need a motion to, um, c- uh, continue with the same setup, I guess. I don't know how you word that.
I, I move, we continue with the same setup, which is Craig as chair, Craig as vice chair, which actually was news to me. I did not know there was a vice chair. Congratulations. Craig, you've been.
I do it anonymously most of the time.
But you've been doing a great job.
Unfortunately for Craig, I'm almost, I'm always here.
I'm very happy about that, Mr. Green.
And Don as secretary.
I second.
All right, so we've got a motion, uh, for keeping these same offices filled with the same people. And, uh, by Commissioner Egenberger and support by Commissioner Singh. Commissioners Uber, would you call the vote, please?
Absolutely. Commissioner Atariah.
Yes.
Commissioner Egenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Oka.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioners Uber, yes. And Chairman Green.
Yes, and I have to say that I am honored to, uh, to work with you guys, uh, in my little limited capacity. And if, if there's anything that you guys ever want me to do differently or improve upon, please communicate with me by email or whatever and, um, let me know. I'd be happy to, you know, to, to improve. Okay, so our next agenda item is pure development. Where we are considering a site plan, is a site plan approval, uh, for property which is located south of Michigan Avenue between Denton and Beck Road. Patrick, could you give us more detail?
Or, I'm going to go ahead and share my screen here. The, uh, the project sponsor proposes to construct a, uh, one-hundred-and-eighty-three-thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-square-foot warehouse and material distribution center on seven contiguous parcels located on the north side of Michigan Avenue between Denton and Beck. The subject site is zoned LIR, Light Industrial Research, which allows warehousing and material distribution centers through special land use approval. At the planning commission's last meeting on February first, uh, the planning commission recommended approval of that special land use. And on February twenty-third, the township board approved the special land use for the site. The site, uh, was previously rezoned, uh, to the LIR district as well. So this has been before the planning commission a few times uh, in a few different capacities. Prior to the subject site plan, um, on this parcel in 2018, there were three large buildings for light industrial research use that were approved by the township, um, on one of the parcels farther east and, uh, farther north. And, um, those, uh, those industrial buildings that were, uh, approved back in 2018, they had included an exterior, exterior material modification that was approved by the planning commission on March fifth, 2018. I note that just because, uh, a little bit later in the review, I'll note, um, a request from the applicant for a material modification of the, uh, of zoning ordinance. Those, uh, three previous buildings were not constructed. And the project sponsor for pure development proposes to occupy, uh, the parcel and some of the property farther to the west. For the, uh, schedule regulations, the plans submitted, um, comply with the LIR zoning requirements for the minimum lot size and lot width, um, as well as the setbacks for the front, rear and side yards. As well as the minimum setback from a residential district. And there is a residential district to the west. And there's a minimum setback of 100 feet that's required. And that 100 feet is illustrated on the plans. And there's also no grading or tree removal within that 100-foot area. There are some grading, um, in portions of the parking lot and driveway on the north and west sides of the site that are located within the required 25-foot wetland and drain setbacks. Because of the location of the parking lot and the driveway in these areas, the, um, applicant has applied for variances from those setbacks to the zoning board of appeals. And the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing and review the variance requests on March eleventh, 2021. For the traffic impact, there are four points of access that are proposed. There are three new curb cuts proposed along Michigan Avenue. And there's also a drive that's proposed to connect to, um, the existing boulevard located farther east. Um, of the three curb cuts that are proposed on Michigan Avenue, one of those curb cuts, um, is existing and two of them are new. There are some curb cuts along Michigan Avenue that, that go unused. Because Michigan Avenue is under the jurisdiction of the Michigan Department of Transportation, MDOT must review and approve any access points. And MDOT may also include additional conditions. Based on the size of the proposed development and the traffic, the traffic impact study has been vetted and reviewed by the township. And the traffic impact study, um, recommends, uh, four, uh, major items. The first is it recommends a full right-turn lane on Michigan Avenue at the west driveway. It recommends a right-turn lane at the east driveway. It recommends a right-turn taper at the center driveway. And finally, it recommends signal timing adjustments by MDOT at the intersection of Michigan and Denton. The traffic impact study notes that to create the proposed right-turn lanes and tapers, the impact study recommends converting the existing twelve-foot-wide paved shoulder and cross-hatched area along Michigan Avenue by including new pavement markings to delineate the turn lanes within the existing hatched area. And, uh, what I'll do is I'll bring up the aerial here and, uh, and we'll identify the exact area. So if we zoom in on Michigan Avenue, you'll see the westbound lane on the north side, there's actual concrete there and it's cross-patched. And what the traffic impact study recommends doing is to, is to repaint that. The traffic impact study was reviewed by Canton Township's Traffic Transportation Engineering Consultant, Wade Trim. Wade Trim's report states that it appears that the right-turn lanes can accommodate, can be accommodated by removing the, the existing striping and adding right-turn arrows. But Wade Trim also stated that this should be evaluated by MDOT to ensure that the base of that concrete is sufficient to accommodate, uh, semi-trucks. So again, that suggestion in the traffic impact study or those recommendations, not only subject to, uh, MDOT review, but the actual physical condition of that lane to handle that, that traffic. Therefore, if the site plan is recommended for approval by the planning commission, uh, we recommend that a condition be included requiring that the traffic impact study and site plan are subject to approval by MDOT, including any required upgrades to the site or Michigan Avenue. The applicant is in the process of revising the plan designed for emergency vehicle access pursuant to the fire marshal's review and comments. And another recommended condition is that, um, if the planning commission recommends approval of the site plan, the site plan must meet all the requirements of the fire marshal prior to consideration of the site plan by the township board. Uh, the applicants have been communicating with the fire marshal on some player access, uh, items. And, uh, there was a, uh, an additional plan sheet added to the end of, um, the packet that's online. uh, an additional plan sheet added to the end of, um, the packet that's online. And that includes, um, some proposed access points by the applicant to satisfy the fire marshal's comments. So uh, we can look at that in a little bit, but, um, this, uh, this won't proceed to, uh, any pre-construction. Um, unless the fire marshal has approved that access. Um, for the parking, um, based on the floor area and the estimated number of employees, uh, there are a hundred ninety-five parking spaces required. Um, the zoning ordinance does allow a maximum number of parking spaces to be ten percent greater than the minimum number of spaces, which would put the maximum number of spaces permitted at two hundred and fifteen. Uh, there are two hundred and sixty-five proposed associate spaces and ninety proposed personal van spaces. And the zoning ordinance allows the planning commission to increase the parking requirement based on the level of current or future traffic. Uh, based on the applicant's description of the warehouse and distribution center use for the online retailer. The nature of this use will require more parking spaces based on the use. And they, we therefore recommend approval of a modification to the maximum parking space requirement. Uh, there are, there are also several spaces shown for delivery vans. Uh, there are nine hundred and sixty-six delivery van spaces proposed that are eleven feet wide and twenty-seven feet deep. Um, because these vans are fleet vehicles for the proposed use, they're not subject to the maximum parking requirements. Um, the site plan does show the loading area on east side of the site. And, uh, this is in the side yard of the site where, uh, there are the truck docks for semi trucks. Um, there is a van loading area where, uh, vans will cycle through the van queuing area. And then we'll go from west to east across the building. And there will be carts that come out and load up the vans for, uh, personal deliveries. And so the vans are, um, they're, they're not, they're not semi trucks, they're, um, types of delivery vans that, that are fairly common. And it's also underneath a canopy, so uh, it's technically within what would be classified as a building area. So it's not your typical loading area. Um, and it's also, um, not technically in a front yard area because it's within the building itself. Um, for the, uh, for the architecture, as we previously noted in March, on March fifth of twenty eighteen, the planning commission approved exterior building modifications for a previously proposed research and industrial building on the site to allow for more preformed concrete panels on the industrial portion of that building and that's permitted. Uh, the applicants are asking for a modification, uh, of the building material standards of section twenty-six point zero six of the zoning ordinance, which requires at least seventy-five percent brick on the office portion of an industrial building and a max of fifty percent concrete panels on the entire building. Uh, section twenty-six point zero six does allow the planning commission to approve modifications to these standards to achieve a specific architectural objective as demonstrated by the project sponsor in meeting the overall development objectives of the community. The applicants propose eighty percent precast concrete panel coverage of, of the building walls, which includes a mix of unpainted gray, painted gray and painted blue. The remainder of the building will be covered with metal panel, windows and doors. Uh, the proposed office walls are composed of these materials with no masonry. Um, will, uh, we defer this, uh, decision to the planning commission based on the evaluation of the, uh, architectural objectives. And, uh, I'll go ahead and try to find one of the pages here so that when we do go back to it, uh, we'll have a, we'll have a point of reference. Um, so while I'm, uh, scrolling down to that, um, there's also a landscape plan that's included. And, uh, there are revisions required on the landscape plan. It is designed to meet the standards of the zoning ordinance. Uh, but there are some items of the landscape plan that, that are going to require some revisions. Um, it, the, uh, intent of the plan is to meet articles five and five, they have the zoning ordinance, um, for the landscaping requirements as well as the tree replacement requirements. Um, there's over half of the existing wooded area of the site proposed to be preserved. Um, there are plan revisions required for the front yard berm or the size of the berm. Uh, there's some requirements for some ECs, some replacement tree sizes and some standard details, um, which can be made prior to the pre-construction meeting. Uh, the zoning ordinance requires a four-foot high landscape berm wherever an industrial use abuts directly upon land zone for residential use, uh, which would apply to the west side of the site. Um, however, section five point zero three A two of the zoning ordinance allows the planning commission to approve an alternate method of screening based on specific site characteristics and compatibility, compatibility with the character of the surrounding area. In lieu of the landscape berm required on the west side of the site, the applicants proposed to preserve several existing trees in this area, including the one hundred foot buffer to be, uh, kept with the existing trees and no grading. The applicants also proposed to install a seven-foot-high solid privacy fence and plant replacement trees west of the parking lot in that area to provide additional vegetation. Because of the distance between the west side of the parking lot and the nearest residential lot line to the west is almost two hundred feet, um, with over a hundred feet on the western end insisting of preserve wooded area, uh, we recommend approval of the proposed screening alternative with the, uh, wooded area remaining the fence and the uh, planted trees west of the parking lot. There are some comments on, um, their sidewalks that are proposed along the front edge of the building as well as interior sidewalks to the building. Uh, we have some comments on lighting in terms of, uh, the zoning ordinance requires at least one light structure on each side of each entrance at Michigan Avenue that will be required. Uh, the light structures at the intersections, uh, they serve two purposes. The first is that having the light structures at the intersections, if it's the middle of the night, it's easy to slow down and identify the intersection without having to look for it or, or get the wrong one. So it's good for drivers. It also illuminates the intersection. So if there's a pedestrian crossing, uh, that will show the pedestrian in the illumination. So it's both a safety for the pedestrian and, and traffic, uh, management. Um, the last comments that we have are regarding the signage dumpster enclosure and fencing. Um, the signage will be reviewed, uh, by the building department, um, at the time that the permit is, is applied for. Uh, the dumpster enclosure is shown. There, there are some discrepancies in the wall details that have to be corrected. And we recommend that the dumpster walls be integrally colored split face block. And finally, the privacy fence on the west and north side of the site, um, we recommend that the fence be colored in an earth tone that is subtle and visible to a neighboring residence. Um, so, uh, our conclusion from staff is that if the proposed development and the proposed modifications are acceptable to the planning commission, we would recommend approval of the site plan for the pure development warehousing and material distribution center on the subject parcels, uh, subject to the recommendations noted in our review letter. Um, that concludes our staff report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Um, this is not a public hearing, but is there anyone, Patrick, that has raised their hand or has indicated that they want to say anything?
Uh, yes, I have, uh, Mr. Richard Ratner has his hand up. Uh, Mr. Ratner was at the rezoning public hearing as well as the special land use public hearing. Um, so, uh, Mr. Ratner, I'm gonna promote you to panelist and, uh, feel free to unmute and turn your video on.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I just wanted to, uh, renew what I stated of the last meeting about my previous working relationship with Mr. Ratner's law firm and in my, uh, previous career with Verizon. Um, I, I believe the township attorney's reviewed it and doesn't, doesn't feel that there's a conflict, but I just wanted to, uh, make note that I do, I do have a working knowledge with Mr. Ratner.
Okay, thank you for, uh, uh, re-, uh, iterating that, uh, potential conflict. Let's just put it that way. Um, I don't think personally that there's any problem, um, you know, with that here. I don't know if anyone else has any objections, but, uh, I see none. Okay, so, uh, Mr. Ratner, did you have anything that you would like to, uh, comment on?
Well, first of all, we're excited to be here. Uh, we think this is a terrific project, but Josh Mannion, who is the engineer and I think can answer a lot of your questions, uh, is here also if he raises a hand. Uh, I checked and he said he was, oh, there he is. Okay. And, um, Patrick has done a terrific job of, um, going through the entire project. Uh, we believe it, it is a, um, terrific use for the area and also um, a great advantage to, to the town, township. Um, but we're here to answer any questions that you have about those things that, uh, Patrick brought up or other things that were on your mind. Thank you.
Okay, well, I, I have one as, uh, it's the, um, I guess the elephant in the room is that there's never been stated who's going to occupy this space. Um, is that still a secret?
Yes, we'd rather, I haven't been authorized yet to release the name and I'd like, um, I think you'll be very pleased, but I am, I'm not authorized to.
Okay, all right, that response. No, I understand. I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
Even though it shows on the drawings?
I didn't see anything on the drawings.
No, there's, there's one page where you can see a name on the drawings.
Oh, okay, all right. You got a, a more sharper eye than I do, so I'll have to go back and. Okay, all right, um, my question.
Nothing that gets past Mr. Weber, no.
You don't have to confirm or deny, okay? Um, my, my, uh, comments are this, talking about that wall, uh, both, uh, Patrick, we don't have to have a wall. I know that that's a usual buffer if you have limited room between industrial use and residential. However, um, if at all possible, I like to avoid walls, um, where we can put natural uh, buffering, uh, the birmingham trees, uh, to galore, that kind of, do we have room to do landscaping as opposed to a wall or a fence, whatever you want to call it?
Um, yeah, there, there is room. Um, what I can do is I can bring up the landscape plan for that side. And, um, I will share my screen here.
Okay. Sometimes you don't have a choice in terms of limited, uh, space, but, um, I always like to avoid the walls if possible.
Okay, so this is the landscape plan, um, and we're in the northwest corner of the parking lot. And along the, along the buffer, there's a mix of, uh, deciduous and evergreen trees. A lot of these are parking lot trees and replacement trees that are required to be replanted. And, uh, up along the, the, the dash line that has the access there, it's a seven-foot-high privacy fence. And it goes along the north side of the, uh, parking lot and then angles and then goes south. And then it goes, uh, south down the line of, uh, the parking lot up to, um, up to the line of the, the front yard setback. So it's a perimeter fence that's, uh, proposed, that it's proposed as solid, but, um, I think the applicants had something like, uh, a vinyl fence in mind. Um, as something just to be a barrier between adjacent residential areas and the facility. Um, a fence is not required. Uh, what's, what's required is a, is a landscape berm. Uh, given the, the trees and some of the topography there, it might be better not to grade and just to, to plan it, but um, alternative methods of, of screening are permitted by the planning commission. And, uh, I'll let the applicant speak to, um, the, uh, uh, how the fence would be justified.
Okay.
Ash, you want to chime in?
Yeah, I can speak to the fence question there. The, uh, the intent is to save as much of that natural wooded buffer as we can between this parking lot and the adjacent residential, uh, property. So we're just doing minimal amount of grading in order to put the parking lot in and then uh, a row of trees adjacent to the, uh, the parking lot and then installing that fence for the, uh, for the added, uh, added privacy. Um, but then, you know, the hope, you know, if we were to install a berm, it would, we'd have to take out quite a bit more, um, you know, to get a four-foot-high berm, that'd be, you know, quite a bit of trees that we'd have to clear out through there, uh, of the natural trees. So, um, that's where we landed on the, uh, the approach of, you know, putting a fence in, um, infilling, you know, the trees along the, uh, the parking lot and then, um, more, more trees that are sort of a lower growth infill, uh, gaps than, than may exist in the woods there. So, uh, I feel, feel comfortable with that, uh, along with.
How tall is that fence?
Uh, seven foot high.
Seven foot high, okay. How does the rest of the commission feel about, about fencing versus, um, you know, I, I certainly understand that, you know, I don't really want to see a lot of, uh, existing trees removed. Um, if we don't have to, I was just trying to avoid installing a new fence if we had an alternative. But how does the commission feel on that? Anybody want to speak up?
I, I'm okay with the fence.
Okay.
Yeah, I am too, if it helps us keep trees.
Okay.
Yep, same here.
Yeah, I would agree with, um, what Zuber said.
All right, all right, so be it. All right. Um, the only other point I would like to make is, um, and I know that you probably already, uh, got this in mind. Um, I don't want to see rooftop units from Michigan Avenue when we're driving along. So I'm, I'm hoping that your design includes, uh, parapitting that is, uh, high enough to, uh, uh, keep that, that view from being ugly.
Yes, we have looked at that. Um, I can comment on that. Our architects looked at the height of the parapet as well as the height of the uh, rooftop mechanical units to ensure, uh, there wouldn't be any, you know, visibility of those. So we have, we have looked at that.
Okay, and it's an industrial design, um, you know, that you have there. Um, we're gonna be looking at just, you'd say, I believe, blue and gray, uh, pretty much in terms of overall coloring.
That is correct for the coloring of the building and also have on, on the, uh, meeting here, uh, tonight, Matt Regler, who, um, can speak uh, in more detail to the architectural, uh, design.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to hear that.
Okay, I will, gotta stop the screen share first and, all right, I see Mr. Regler. So Mr. Regler, I'm promoting you to a panelist. Hello.
I, I apologize. I was, I was literally kicked out. You said I'm promoting and then I was kicked out right at that exact moment. I apologize.
Welcome.
Uh, hi, thank you. Um, I'm glad to be here. Um, we are, um, the intent here is, as Josh was saying, you know, a mixture of gray, blue and, uh, just regular buff colored concrete panel. To try to, and really to try to break up it, break it up the mass from just a single long mass of plain gray concrete. Um, and you can see one of the pieces of documentation in the, in the meeting, materials was some renderings that we did, some three-dimensional renderings from a variety of views of the building. And one of the things that you can't really see on the, um, on what you're seeing here is, uh, that blue strip midway up the, uh, up the, along the whole length of the building midway height, um, is actually a canopy that projects out some forty feet away from the building. So oh, that's not even a kid, that what you're seeing there is, is not really what will you perceive, uh, when you look at the building. There'll be a pretty heavy shadow line underneath that canopy. Um, and also that breaks up the, the mass, the, the paramassing of the building as you're going down right there. Um, and you can really see it, um, keep going.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it, and that's, and we see that's on both, there you go. Uh, that's probably the best view right there. Um, despite the fact that it's, you know, a few hundred feet long, um, we are trying to break it up both in terms of uh, vertical height of the parapet, um, different colors on the, the main building mass. And also by the, the addition of that canopy for the, um, which shelters the van, um, the parking as they're being loaded.
Okay. All right, any, uh, commission comments on the, uh, design, overall design of the, uh, building? I think it looks pretty good.
Given that it's such a huge building.
Yeah. I just, I just wondered how many, um, how many jobs are associated with this, uh, with this building?
I'm not sure the answer to that. Maybe Mr. Ratner.
I think they said hundred and ninety-five or something in the last meeting. Correctly.
We, uh, don't have the final figures on that. For tonight, there's several, several jobs. It's gonna be a very, um, nice installation relative to employment.
Okay.
Yes, I can comment a little bit. I don't have the precise numbers in front of me, but, you know, employees that are working inside, uh, inside the facility, uh, you know, for most of the. You know, for most of the year will average, I think, in the, in the two hundreds. And then that, that does not include the van delivery drivers. So van delivery drivers on top of that will be a few hundred, most likely.
And your vans, the vans are slated to be electric, so there's electrification in the, planned to be in the parking lots for the vehicles that are being stored.
Yes, that is correct. You know, the fleet of EV vehicles isn't available today, but the infrastructure is being installed right now for when the fleet is available to have, have it ready for it, for EV.
Okay. All right, any, any further comments from the commission?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on, hopefully soon having the electric vans, hopefully that will make it a little quieter. I know, actually, that's a bit of a problem, right, that people don't always hear a electric car coming, but something that at least would I help, help the neighbors and I hope all the berm and everything will make it so the neighbors are not hearing anything, but I hope the electric vans also make the, the movement a little quieter.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
You are very welcome to do that.
All right, I move to recommend approval of the site plan for the Pure Development Warehousing and Materials Distribution Center on said parcels. Pursuant to the information and plans provided, including approved modifications to the required number of parking spaces, architecture and buffer landscaping on the west side of the site, subject to the following conditions. ZBA approval of the proposed variances to the drain setbacks and wetland setbacks. MDOT review and approval of the proposed plans, including any improvements required by MDOT. Compliance with requirements of the township engineer and fire marshal and planned corrections for the proposed lighting, landscaping, tree replacement, dumpster enclosure and fencing as specified in the community planners report.
Second. Okay, we've got a, a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Acharia. Any further discussion on that motion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Acharia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eganberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Okon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Our recommendation passes on to the trustees and they'll meet Patrick, what, within the next month?
Yeah, for now, I think we, we have this proposed as early as next Tuesday's meeting on March ninth with the Board of Trustees.
Wow, that's fast, okay, all right.
Patrick, I have one question. I may have missed this. Is this a twenty-four-hour day operation?
I believe it is.
Okay. I just didn't see that, I might have missed it. Mr. Ratner, please give, give Kim and Rob my best.
I sure will. Appreciate it.
Okay, all right, let's go on to agenda item number four.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck to you, gentlemen, yep. Grandview South, where we're considering a final site plan approval for property which is located east of Bar Road between Geddes and Mott Road. Patrick, could you give us some detail on that?
Uh, yes, I'll bring that up here. Just for my notes, who supported that motion to approve pure development?
I believe it was Commissioner Acharia.
Okay. Right, I just had to complete that note. Great, thank you. I will share my screen again with Grandview South. The proposal for Grandview South is for approval of the Grandview South final site plan. Back in twenty nineteen, Grandview South came in with their preliminary site plan and also their plan development plan. Farther north of the property, it doesn't really show it as much on this aerial. But farther north is Grandview Estates and the portion known as Grandview South was always envisioned as a continuation of that development going south. The only material difference between the two developments is that Grandview Estates, those units are on individual lots, so it's a typical site condominium. Grandview South is a detached condo, so there's more common area. And back in twenty nineteen, the, the Plan Development District Amendment for Grandview was approved and the preliminary site plan was approved for Grandview South. These were both approved by the Township Board of Trustees on September twenty-fourth, twenty nineteen. And they were approved and they were recommended for approval by the Planning Commission on September ninth, twenty nineteen. So it's been a little while. There, there's been, not, the slowdown really has been based on the, the pandemic and some of the delays with, with county permitting partially as a result. So the applicant has continued to move forward in every other respect from preliminary to final. But with a condominium and a site condominium, to get from preliminary to final, they have to have all the permits, all their securities in line. So it, it's quite a challenge to get all that done to go from preliminary to final. So sometimes from preliminary to final, there, there's quite a lag. In this case, the lag was a little bit larger, but longer because of, of the pandemic and slowdowns. And I say that only because we have some planning commissioners on the Planning Commission that were not here in twenty nineteen. So some of it is just a little bit of background in terms of where we, where we came from. Since the preliminary site plan review was approved, there have been some changes to the development. The layout is very much the same as what was approved back in number twenty nineteen. There are some differences, though. One difference is there's been a new entrance added to Bar Road. Bar Road is a north-south road to the west. And I'll zoom in on it here. This is a new road that will go out to, will go out to Bar Road. And that was requested by, I believe, the Planning Commission and the Township Board back in twenty nineteen as a way to disperse some of the traffic and out of the development. As a result of adding the new road out to Bar, the number of units has decreased by one. At preliminary site plan, there were two hundred and twenty-two units proposed and approved. What's on the final site plan is two hundred and twenty-one units. So that was, that was one of, that was another one of the changes to reduce the units. Finally, the, the other major change is that the following three intersections have been realigned to slow the traffic. At Cranston and Fowler, Cranston and Bingham and Cranston and Ogden and I'll try to bring these up here to, to illustrate to illustrate what we mean by, by the realignment. So at so the northernmost road is, is Fowler going west to east. And it's, it's not quite a roundabout on either end, but it is something that as a car is coming into it, the traffic is, well, you might be able to consider it something like a roundabout, but the traffic has to slow to get through and go around it. And one of the concerns at preliminary is that with a straightaway, there were concerns with the neighbors that the traffic would be too fast. And there were concerns that the, the developer should do something to try to slow the traffic. So the developer has, has made that attempt and and we've looked at it and it's a, it's an improvement since, since the last time. Another one is at Cranston and Ogden, it was realigned so that traffic has to slow before turning other than having a little bit more of a straightaway there. So those, those traffic improvements have been made to try to slow the traffic and also to try to disperse the traffic. When the original plan development was approved for Grandview Estates, included several definite benefits and those same definite benefits carried forward to Grandview South. In, in addition, Grandview South has a few other definite benefits that will stand on their own. I'll go down to the Mott Road entrance here at the south. One of the definite benefits proposed is to pave about eleven hundred feet of Mott Road from the development entrance at Denton Road. Or from the development, development entrance to Denton Road. So at Lewiston Road here at the entrance on Mott Road, about eleven hundred feet to the intersection of Denton Road will be paved. The site will have thirty-one point six percent open space, which exceeds the twenty-five percent minimum. There will be about four hundred trees preserved that are either protected or landmark trees. And the applicant's proposed providing two one-year memberships to the summit for each of the proposed units. Going through some of the items in our site plan review report, I'll just go over some of the, the major ones. For the schedule regulations, the proposed development is proposed to comply with the zoning standards with the exception of the modifications that were granted at the time of plan development review. And those are, first, the front yard setbacks were reduced from twenty-five feet to twenty feet. The rear yard setbacks were reduced from thirty-five feet to thirty feet for a few units only, and those are units twenty-seven or two seventy-eight and three ninety through three ninety-four. There were also modifications to the wetland setbacks of units three fifty-six to three sixty and three eighty-seven to three ninety-two. The plans include the schedule of regulations and modifications as approved. And Grandview South is consistent with the development guidelines of Grandview Estates except for those modifications that were granted to the front yard setbacks and some of the rear yard setbacks. With the front yard setbacks of going from twenty-five feet to twenty feet, twenty feet is enough space in the vast majority of cases where you can fit a car within twenty feet, but still have room on the sidewalk as well. Anything less than twenty, we, we typically don't want to do. But our typical parking spaces are supposed to be nineteen feet deep, so a twenty-foot deep driveway is just enough to be able to get a car there in the driveway and still keep the sidewalk clear. There are sidewalks proposed along all interior frontages. There's also sidewalk proposed along the Mott Road frontage and the Barlow frontage, so there's, there's going to be pedestrian access throughout the development. There will be decorative light poles on each side of the entrance. And there are five light poles located within the development where the street meets the sidewalks that intersect with open space sidewalks. Our recommendation there is that fixtures be decorative throughout the development and at a height of ten to twelve feet. There is a landscape plan submitted that's intended to meet the requirements of the zoning ordinance. We have a few very minor landscape discrepancies that we're working with the applicant on, but nothing major. It's designed in accordance with the zoning ordinance, so we don't have any disputes over zoning ordinance interpretations or, or what's required. And then finally, the architecture is consistent with what was approved in Grandview Estates. Most models have less than fifty percent brick masonry that's required by the zoning ordinance. However, each model has at least thirty-five percent masonry. And the coronary unit side elevations that face the street must be brick to the top of the first floor and include windows on the street side so that there's not a blank wall for the street. And there's a minimum horizontal offset of at least four feet required in the rear of each unit according to the zoning ordinance. So that concludes our staff report. The only other item that I do want to mention about this development, and this was an item that did come up today, is that the applicants were concerned about the setback requirements of, if there is a deck proposed in any of the rear units. Sometimes on a detached condo, the deck is delineated by dash lines. In this case, the unit is just a rectangular box and there's no specific dash line for a deck. So what we recommend is that if the applicant makes any modifications to the plan to delineate a dash deck line or a line that's otherwise allowed for a deck, that that be done only in accordance with the zoning ordinance prior to board review. The, the zoning ordinance does allow decks to encroach into rear yards in some cases and those those cases require at least a twenty-five-foot setback from the rear lot line to the deck and the deck can't exceed a certain height, I think it's four feet. So if there are any modifications to, to illustrate any deck encroachment into a rear yard, then that would have to be done only in accordance with the zoning ordinance and no modification would be allowed from the zoning ordinance. I did talk to the applicant a little bit about this and I'm, I'm only concerned about a handful of lots. First is two seventy-eight. This is a lot that has a thirty-foot setback from the rear lot line. So to put a deck in there, you, we can't encroach anymore than five additional feet there to keep that. So the applicant would have to play with the house model of two seventy-eight as well as the house model of some of the other ones on the east side of the site of units three ninety through three ninety-four, where those units are thirty feet from the adjacent lot line. So if they do anything with a deck there and change the envelope to allow for a deck encroachment, then they'd be very limited and they would have to put there the house model so that there weren't any issues at the time of building plan review. So that's just something to note, something that may carry forward to the board as a recommendation. If there are changes to the plan, they must be in accordance with the zoning ordinance standards. So with that, staff's recommendation is approval of the final site plan subject to the applicant revising the plans in accordance to the recommendations above in our staff review. And that concludes our report and I'll be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Patrick. Is there a project sponsor with us tonight?
Yes, we have two. We have Mr. Bill Anderson from Atwell. Bill, I'm going to promote you to panelist if you want to turn on your, your microphone and your video if you have it. And we also have Mr. Joe Score who is from Polte. I will also promote Mr. Score to the panelist as well.
Welcome, gentlemen.
Good evening, everyone.
Yeah, so did you have anything that you might like to add concerning this project?
Yeah, uh, thank you. Joe Score, Polte Gomes of Michigan. I think Patrick did a, a nice summary. I don't really have a lot to add. This is effectively a continuation of Grandview, Grandview Estates, which has been a very successful, well-received community and we expect, we expect Grandview South to continue that success. There is one item that I, I think it's worthwhile to add. It, it's a significant, I, we think a significant community benefit that is not directly or formally associated with Grandview or Grandview South, but I think, but I think it's worth mentioning. And it has to do with the, the slaughterhouse on Bar Road, the slaughterhouse meat processing facility on Bar Road. It's probably familiar with it. It's, it's the Boyer property. It's a not-conforming use within the township. And what, what we've done, we've come to a, an agreement, a financial arrangement with the owner-operator to, to essentially cease operations, shut down his business and relocate the, relocate the facility. This is, again, not an obligation or associated with PD. It, it was voluntary on, on our own initiative. And quite frankly, we thought that, you know, just given the proximity of the slaughterhouse to the existing residents and, and, you know, taking into account future or residential development trends in this particular section of the township, we thought it was the right thing to do. So again, I think it'll be a, a nice benefit for the surrounding area. That's really all I have and, you know, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Is that a done deal, Mr. Score?
It is, it is. It was formalized. It, it's actually via a, a declaration of use restrictions that's, that's, that's recorded with the Register of Deeds. I do want to say though, and I, and I should, I'm sorry, I, I was, I'll be remiss if I don't. It's in the process. He, he's in the process of winding it down. I would expect him to cease operations and relocate sometime this summer. So he's got a few months to go, but it is a done deal.
It's no longer owned by Mr. Boyer, though, right?
It, it's not, well, the, the, the operator is a, is a purchased under land contract. So Mr. Boyer still does have some ownership, but we, again, the, the, the agreement was, was worked out with the, the current operator and Mr. Boyer.
Gotcha, okay. All right, from the commission. Does anyone, just raise your hand if you have anything that you'd like to add or comment or questions, anything like that? Commissioner Foster?
Just a really quick question about the roundabouts, the little roundabouts that are in in the neighborhood. Will there be signage at the roundabouts directing traffic or no?
That is a good question. I don't believe there will be signage. But I can defer to my engineer, or actually, my land development director was also on this call, but I don't believe there will be signage.
Yeah, I don't believe so as well, Joe.
Okay, just curious.
It's a mini roundabout. It's not, you know, obviously a primary road roundabout. The speed limit is twenty-five. Again, it's just slow. It's mostly internal traffic. Just trying to continue to slow the internal traffic down.
Cut down on the straightaways.
Yep, that's right.
Okay. Anyone else have anything that they want to say? No? I have a question. Patrick, when you're you're messaging in the beginning, you talked about the outside or the sides of the homes that are facing the streets not being plain, which I'm all for. That's a lot of houses here in terms of the ends of rows of houses. So basically, they're going to end up with a different design in the package? Is that correct? For those houses?
Yeah, the the house, the house models in the development are called for, I believe it's in the PD agreement that they have those architectural requirements. And I think they also apply to Grandview Estates to the north.
Okay, all right. So depending on which house it is, it's either going to be the left side of the house or the right side of the house that maybe is going to have windows or different treatment of materials? Is that kind of what we're going to be looking at?
I can answer this question. Yeah, it's essentially the brick level changes. The brick level changes. It's those houses that face the street, the sides that face the street, they'll have first floor brick. And actually, on both sides of the house, not just the side-facing or the street-facing side. And then I believe there's another window that's added, but it's essentially, they're the same plans and elevations. We just changed the brick level of the home.
You said that you're going to add one window on the side?
You know, that one I'd have to take a look at. It's absolutely consistent with what we did in Grandview. But I'm not positive on the number of windows on the sides. It's more, it was more the percentage of brick on the sides.
Okay. And then my other question I have is Blue Bell Street. I don't know if Patrick could bring it up on the map there. It shows that that's cutting to the east between two houses and then basically coming to an end with the idea, of course, that maybe another additional subdivision would be to the east. Is that what we're looking at there in that stub-up road?
That's correct. We don't control that property, but it is stubbing into vacant land.
So there's no, there's no definite requirement on anybody that comes to the east. If they decide to develop, they don't have to comply with that. So that stub road could end up just being out there. Is there, is there a way in which that can just become like a little mini park or become just part of the common area of grass as opposed, and just still be there in case that 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 road can be connected to another subdivision? But I just, I just don't, I don't like it if it's just going to be out there for the next twenty, thirty years hanging out there. You see what I'm saying?
Yeah. Just you're essentially just looking for maybe some enhanced landscaping or just some some sod in that particular area. Yeah, I mean, in concept, we don't have a problem with that.
If we wanted to even not pave that stub, I think we could cut that extra. We've done that in another community with a very low probability of that street going through. So we papered it, so it was there if the plan down the line, planning in the community wanted it, but we didn't put in the road and the utility. So we could certainly do that here if that's the pleasure of the commission board.
That's, that would be my recommendation. And then the same thing would go for the sidewalks that are there. I mean, it's like those are kind of useless until another development takes place back there. Don't you think? That's just my opinion. I don't know how the board members feel.
I'm surprised to hear you saying that some sidewalks are useless.
Is this being recorded?
Well, they're useless in this plan in this time, at this time. If I was walking myself, it's like, okay, where am I walking to? I don't know. If you want to, you can leave the sidewalk. So how's that?
Either way, it's fine with.
I say don't, I say don't put them in. I say don't pave anything. Don't put sidewalks there. Just a grassy area. It just becomes part of the common area that the association has to take care of. But it'll be there in case one day in a future off-time time that we may need to connect that. How's that?
That's, that's fine.
Does that work for you?
That works for us.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else? That's all I've got. It looks like it's going to be a pretty good project. Lot more people coming to Canton. All right, do I hear a motion? Everybody's all quiet tonight.
I move to recommend approval of the site plan for Grandview South on said tax parcels, which includes two hundred and twenty-one single-family residential condominium units on seventy-six point five nine net acres, subject to landscaping and lighting revisions noted above, obtaining all outside agency permits and submitting the financial securities to the township prior to review by the Board of Trustees.
Support.
Okay, we've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by, I'll give that one to Commissioner Foster, I believe. Any further discussion? Wait a minute, hold on.
Mr. Chairman, somebody's asked, somebody in the public is asking to make a time out.
Yes, Patrick, did you want to connect Ms. Miller to the proceedings before we proceed with this vote?
Yeah, Ms. Miller, you are able to talk. So if you're not on mute, you can go right ahead.
Do we need to open a public hearing?
No.
Okay.
No, not required.
Good evening.
Hello.
Good evening. I hope you can hear me. I'm Sandra Miller, and I live in Grandview Estates. I just wanted to make a couple of comments that, as Chairman Green might recall, and I believe some of the other commissioners, many Grandview Estate residents previously appeared before the commission to address our concerns regarding the development of Grandview South by Polte. At that time, one of our major concerns was about the impact traffic flow through our subdivision. Subsequently, we had meetings with Mr. Score of Polte, and we were able to reach an acceptable compromise, which led to the many roundabouts that are being placed on the south end of both Bingham and Cranston. And we are very hopeful that that will slow traffic coming through our subdivision. And at that time, it was also indicated that the plans did not reflect a designated entrance to Grandview South off of Barb Road, which would have directed many construction vehicles into or through Grandview's Estates to get to Grandview South. And I guess I'm just, first of all, we were just wanting to confirm here tonight that those changes had been made to the plans. We had full confidence, Mr. Score, that he was attempting to have that done. We just wanted to make sure that that had gotten through to your staff, the changes had been made. So I compliment Mr. Score because he has been very attentive to the residents of Grandview Estates, and I compliment your staff for agreeing to those changes. I guess the only last thing that we were concerned about will be the construction traffic because the Mott Road entrance won't be open for quite some time, which will direct most of everybody down through Grandview Estates. And by that, I mean some of the future residents, which we do not mind at all. We would just hope, and we say again, that we hope that construction traffic, construction traffic will be regulated and not be allowed to go through our subdivision and will use the Barb Road entrance and exit for the future development of Grandview South. And again, we thank Mr. Score for what he has done for us.
Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Score, is there a way in which the, that can be directed in terms of construction of the south development that they, you know, just go through Barb Road to alleviate that kind of concern on the north side?
Yeah, we plan to bring all construction traffic through the southern entrance on Barb Road. It will be strictly enforced. You know, sometimes trades a little bit have a mind of their own, so we have to stand top of them, but we fully intend to do so.
Okay, so there will be a way to get in from, from, there will not be a way to get in from Mott at this point, right?
No, not, not, yeah, sorry. That's correct. Not until that phase is completed, but, but, but obviously, the the southern entrance on Barb will be, will be available, and that will be the only entrance for construction traffic.
Is Barb Road paved at any point?
It is not.
Is it? It is not. Okay, so it's still dirt road. Okay. So it can, it can still handle the heavy trucks and the things that are spilled and all that kind of stuff. Okay. All right. Well, I thank you for working with the residents. We always encourage that.
I do have one more comment, if I could, for Mr. Score. I want to thank him because on the first plans, we did not see any landscaping between Grandview Estates and Grandview South on the north end of all those homes. And I see on the plans now that there are trees planned there, and you did state at one of our meetings that you'd try and get us trees. So thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, good going. Okay, now, we do have a motion on the floor. I believe it was by Commissioner Zubor and supported, was it supported by Commissioner Foster? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, maybe you should repeat the motion because some of us forget.
Certainly. I move to recommend approval of the final site plan for Grandview South on said tax parcels, which includes two hundred and twenty-one single-family residential condominium units on seventy-six point fifty-nine net acres, subject to landscaping and lighting revisions noted above, obtaining all outside agency permits and submitting the financial securities to the township prior to review by the Board of Trustees.
Okay, motion made, supported. Yep, yep. Again, any further discussion? Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure, Commissioner Charia. Still here? I think he might have left.
He was there.
Hold on, I've got a an attendee. No, I don't, I don't see him. Can
He lives a few houses down the road. I can go knock his door.
It might be past his bedtime. Okay, Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes, and it is past my bedtime.
It's past mine, too. Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Aye, the motion still carries. So they go to the trustees with this, right?
That's correct. Township Board of Trustees will review the final site plan.
All right, gentlemen, good luck with that. And, you know, we hope to see another good project coming to Canton.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, folks. Appreciate it.
Have a good night. Okay, our fifth agenda item is the Michigan Fireworks Company LLC, where we're considering a seasonal sales permit. This property is located north of Ford and west of Sheldon. I believe it's right outside of O'Reilly's, right? That's usually, that's usually where they, where they like to camp out for fireworks season. Patrick, could you tell us more about this?
Sure. This is a seasonal fireworks permit that has been similar to years past. The layout is the same as last year. And they've applied for one thirty-day seasonal sales permit for a tent in the same lot with the same layout. The review shows that since there's no change from last year and the applicant basically knows the procedure, our recommendation would be for approval. Their permit application is to start on June sixteenth and be finished on July sixth. Based on the material submitted and prior year's findings, we recommend approval.
Okay, thank you very much for that. This is pretty run-of-the-mill. We've done this with them, I think, for several years in that location, and I don't recall any difficulties or problems. So I think this requires a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve one thirty-day seasonal sales permit for the Michigan Fireworks Company on parcel number zero three nine dash nine nine dash zero zero two five dash zero zero one, commencing on June sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, subject to obtaining appropriate permits from the Building Services Division for erection of the tent and compliance with all signage regulations.
Support.
All right, I've got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Foster. Any further discussion?
Does this, does this mean that summer is right around the corner?
No, summer is, summer is with you right now on the commission.
You're forgetting that we live in Michigan.
You're enjoying summer anyways.
You didn't, you didn't by chance put your snow throw away, did you?
Never.
You can do that probably when this, when this tent goes up. I don't, I don't hear any further discussion. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote on this, please?
Sir, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
And that's a yes from me as well. All right, so we've got some work to give to staff. Referral for the Cherry Hill Preserve Condominiums, Home Depot Outlet, Lifetime Dental Parking Lot Modifications, and Home Depot Michigan Avenue. Do I hear a motion to send those to staff?
So moved.
Support.
Got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Angle to send those to staff? Oh, no, can't say all in favor. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
Sure. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Angle.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Con.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes for me. Commissioner Charia, we missed you. That's okay. No explanation necessary. I'm just pulling your chain.
Yeah, I was thrown out. Sorry.
They would ask me to go and knock your door.
Okay, we have, we have a public hearing to set for March eighth, which is the Barbette. What is the, what is the actual facility, Patrick? Said Barbette. What is that?
It's a, it's the gas station at the northeast corner of Ford and Hagerty Road. Um, it's a, it's the gas station at the northeast corner of Ford and Hagerty Road. And uh, they're proposing to rebuild it. Uh, I think it's a Valero right now.
Right.
Oh, okay, all right, yeah, I can picture that.
And uh, it's, it's on for special land use because they are proposing um, a um, it's called a, a multi-use station. And it, it's a gas station that includes a proposed convenience store and proposed fast food.
Okay, all right, um.
Presumably it'll clean up this corner, right?
Pardon?
You say those, it'll clean up the corner?
Yeah, it's a shabby-looking corner.
Okay, are they, uh, are they also planning electrification uh, possibilities in there as well?
Uh, not that I can tell.
Okay, just, just curious.
You worried about the hot dogs?
The hot dogs.
You worry about the hot dogs? The hot dogs warm in them.
No, the hot dogs that drive on Ford Road.
Oh, those hot dogs.
Yeah.
You want to sell, yes, Greg.
Okay, well, there, there are people that want to get geared up in case somebody wants to come in and um, you know, get their, their electric vehicle uh, recharged on a fast charge. Anyway, so um that was for a public hearing for March eighth. Do I hear a motion to set that public hearing?
Well, wasn't this public hearing already set? Didn't you, is that what you said at the beginning, Patrick?
Yeah, it's, it's been, it's been advertised and and noticed. Um, but I, I'm not sure if it previously showed up on the planning commissioner's agenda. And there have been, there have been times before where um, they'll, something will come in under the wire that meets the noticing deadline, but it doesn't make it on the agenda for formally setting it. So this would just be kind of closing that loop.
Insurance.
The belt and suspenders approach.
All right. Do I have a second?
Or
All right, I've got a motion by Commissioner Zubor and support by Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Zubor, would you call the vote, please?
I thought you'd never ask. Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel.
Yes.
Commissioner Foster.
Sorry, yes, I couldn't get off mute.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
That's a yes. All right, folks. I believe that's all we have. Um, any, anything that anybody wants to talk about real quick before we adjourn?
We get our monthly update on what's going on, Chick-fil-A.
Um, Patrick? Sure, since the last month's meeting, we, we haven't had any updates. And um, so I don't know if the applicants are in the process of uh, working on addressing some of our comments. Most of our comments, as we discussed last time, were about access management and the um, expected uh, backups from the drive-through. Uh, we, staff does have a meeting with MDOT a little bit later this week to talk about a number of projects on uh, Michigan Avenue and Ford Road. So um, I'm not as aware of the proposal, and it's something we'll be talking to MDOT a little bit about, just in terms of some of our comments and um, maybe get some feedback back from MDOT if they've had a chance to review the plans and have any comments on it so far.
Weren't they under a review of the traffic management uh, for that particular, that proposed project? And the, you know, stacking and all that kind of stuff. I thought, I thought there was something that uh, either Canton or Wayne County was to look at before it proceeded.
Yeah, and one of the, uh, one of the recommendations to the applicants um, was to send the plans to MDOT to get MDOT's uh, feedback because depending on where the stacking would go, there's a potential for a Ford Road backup if the stacking is as, as long as it is in uh, in Novi, for example. Um, there, there could be really uh, long backups on Ford Road.
I think that's an understatement, but anyway, that's just me.
Yeah, so we've told, we've told the applicant what our concerns are based on our observations of other Chick-fil-A's and and asked them to work on addressing that. So um, as far as I know, they're probably in the process of looking at that. But in the meantime, when we meet with MDOT this week, this will be something that we'll discuss with them to see if they have any comments so far.
Yeah. Okay. All right, anybody have anything else?
One other thing, Mister Chairman, and this may not be a fair question to you, Patrick, but is there given the, the current status of the former Art Van Furniture Store on Ford Road, is there is there any talk about what could go in there now? I mean, that is such a huge building. And it's going to sit there empty now on Ford Road for who knows how long. Um, I just wonder if, I, I hate to see that sit there like that, especially given how new it is.
Yeah, any, anytime there's a, there's a vacant building, um, especially at a prominent location like that, it's uh, it, it's really something that we don't want to see. I, I don't know what the future proposal is for that. Um, a lot of times there are discussions that go on um, with the, the building owner and any prospective tenants that take place before uh, they'll, they'll talk to the planning division about what their plans are. So um, I'm hopeful that there are conversations happening in terms of repurposing that uh, that building, but um, I don't have any, any news as of yet.
Is um, LA Fitness still interested in coming to Canton?
Um, the last time I saw something from them was roughly a year and a half ago, and um, there were some concerns with the stormwater management.
Well, they were interested in being over uh, near Kroger, right? And that, in that area, just to the west of um, the old Rite Aid, now the Autozone. But i- i- I would, I could, I could see them in that building. I could see them in that, in that building, uh, you know, with um, I don't know, I just uh
They'd be awfully, they'd be awfully close to Lifetime Fitness, though. I don't know. I don't think they'd want to be that close to a competitor.
Maybe, maybe not. Maybe that's just the ideal thing, you know? Just like, just like tonight's project uh, on Canton Center Road, you've got a potential Burger King that will be right across the street from McDonald's.
Yeah. There used to be a Burger King kidney corner from McDonald's, so.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's true. That's very, very true. So sometimes
There's like, there's existing car wash across the street, too.
Yeah, that's true, yeah. So sometimes they're, they don't mind being so close to, to one another. You know, they think they like to, to maybe try to feed off of their business. Anyway, so um, yeah, it's a good concern. It, it to me, that was a, um, it was an innovative building. Um, you know, we were welcome, you know, welcoming Art Van, you know, and we were hoping for a long-term relationship with them. But hey, things change and, you know, here we are. I, I hate to see empty buildings myself, so I'm hoping somebody uh, repurposes that. Anybody have anything else? Then let's get out of here.
Mister Chairman, to adjourn.
Support.
All right. Do we need to vote on this?
Commissions, complete the process.
Will you say?
Commissioner Zubor, could you call the vote to adjourn?
Sure, Commissioner Charia.
Yes.
Commissioner Eggenberger.
Yes.
Commissioner Engel. I can read his lips.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Okay. Commissioner Foster.
Yes.
Commissioner Ocon.
Yes.
Commissioner Singh.
Yes.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Commissioner Zubor, yes, and Chairman Green.
Yes, and we will see you all next month.
Next week.
Week.
I'm sorry, next week. Yeah, that's right, special meeting. I'll be
See you then.
Hopefully. Okay, good night, everybody.
Yeah, take care, take care.